You can rename yourself.
Oh, I don't know how to do that.
I think you go down to video, believe it or not. I don't see where is it?
Or at the top of your little square, you'll have three dots in the upper right corner.
Or if you put the arrow over your, over your picture, basically.
Oh, this one. Right. Okay. Uh, rename.
Hello.
Hey, Greg. How are you?
Hi. Hi, Amy. Hi, Marcia.
Hello. Okay.
I've started the live stream.
All right. Hi, Michael.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey, Michael.
Hello there. You want to borrow my hair clippers, Steve Danzinger?
No, I'm on a fixed income. I can't afford haircuts now.
I, I cut my sons.
It's COVID.
I want to see your son first.
Yeah, there you go.
He's a handsome little guy. I'm gonna step away for a second.
Your background is interesting, Steve.
Oh. It's the M O F D symbol on the side of a truck.
There you go. Now I can see it. It looked a little more.
Yeah, it didn't come out quite. Yeah. It's not quite what I thought it was gonna look like.
A little more European, back in maybe the 40s?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying. I'm, I hadn't seen it before now, so I think I'm gonna change it. You're right. I have another one. Here we go. There we go.
That's better. Good morning, John. Or evening, John.
Morning.
Okay, it is six o'clock according to my computer anyway.
Happy hour.
Sure, we, it's a minute after now. Should we go ahead and get started, Marcia?
Yeah.
So welcome to the Maraga Rana Fire District Regular Board Meeting, July 21st, 2021. The 6 p.m. closed session followed by a 7 p.m. open session, and we will begin now, actually. So can we take the roll call immediate order? Can we get a roll call, please?
Director Bates. Director Dan Ziger.
Here.
Director Donner.
Here.
Director Jex.
Here.
President.
Here. Okay, thank you. So moving on to item 2.0, open, all open up for public comment for the items on the, for the closed session, items 3.1 through 3.5.
We, we do not have any attendees and we've not received any written public comment.
Just a point of order. I just want to let the commission know that on July 7th, we did request advice from the FPPC, the Fair Political Practices Commission regarding whether Mr. Bates has a conflict of interest that requires him to recuse from matters relating to the labor negotiations. Mr. Bates has decided in an abundance of caution from refraining from participating in those matters until we do receive the advice opinion from the FPPC. So I'm not sure if that's why he's not here, but he, he did not intend to join the closed session relating to the labor negotiations, but of course is, is entitled to participate in the real estate matter that's on the closed session agenda.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, I will close, given there's no other comment. I will close the public comment period. And then we need to adjourn and go into the closed session. And then the open session will begin again at 7 p.m.
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Marcia?
Normally it does not require.
Okay. I don't think we actually have to have a vote, but.
We'll see you shortly.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Hi, Marcia.
Maybe.
Hello.
I'm Michael.
Well, just checking my sound. It was awfully quiet in here.
Yeah, kind of scary.
So we are still awaiting John.
Yikes. Excuse me.
Chief, you're looking scholarly.
Long days of staring at my bank of screens here start to add up. Then my head just hurts.
So we're missing John Jex. I don't see Marcia on here anymore. Chief, do you want to call John and see if he's got the right link or whatever?
Director Jackson is right.
Oh, you did?
I'm here.
Oh, there he is. Maybe I just wasn't sorry. I'm at I have a long list now. Okay, I think it's 7:01. We have a quorum. I will call a meeting back to order. We can meet in meeting item four and have a roll call, Marcia.
Director Bates.
Director Dan Ziger.
President.
Director Donner.
Here.
Director Jex.
Here.
President Jordan.
Okay, thank you. So item five, there is nothing to report from the closed section items 3.1 through 3.5. And six, open public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda.
We have received two written public comments. One public comment was received today at 2:19 PM from the Oakland Fire Save Council, which was forwarded to the board at that time and posted on our website. The next item that I just received from Mark Hope, now go ahead and read that into record. Since the last MOFD board meeting, I have noticed the maintaining fire hydrants within my neighborhood, specifically painting the caps and clearing obstruction brush. Thank you. I look forward to seeing the placement of the blue decals. I have also received a spreadsheet from East Bay Mud listing all the fire hydrants that have been inspected within the last five years. Can you please, can you believe that only one hydrant from Maraga, address unknown, and three from Arinda are on that list? This is unacceptable. As MOFD has continually deferred to East Bay Mud for the list of inspections, this has confirmed that MOFD has performed none over this extended period. These fire hydrants are instrumental in preventing a smaller house fire or brush fire from becoming a wildfire. Given that many of these hydrants and water lines are old, coupled with the continuous ground movements, construction, and traffic, it is unlikely that all the hydrants currently would pass an inspection recommended by the NFPA. I've had meetings with Michael Ambrose from East Bay Mud to discuss the possibility of a dedicated inspection program. While Michael still thinks that annual inspections are too much, given that East Bay Mud maintains over 28,000 hydrants, he would like to prioritize inspection frequency based on metrics such as the age of a hydrant, amount of nearby fuel, high-risk structures, i.e. schools, and population centers. Michael was going to discuss the next up to one of his managers. Even though East Bay Mud concluded that there was a low failure rate amongst the sample hydrants, the hydrants that East Bay Mud inspected within the last five years were those that required maintenance due to collisions within traffic and/or construction issues. Therefore, some type of routine fire hydrant inspection plan that tests the integrity of the hydrants and the connections while establishing the current water pressure is needed. This is what I'm asking for. In Michael's defense, he pointed out that none of the Bay Area fire departments have requested the need for fire hydrant inspections. I continue to encourage Chief Wintaker to push for proper inspections. Let us set the MOFD apart from the status quo. That concludes our written public comment, and we do not have any hands raised.
Directors, I may just respond to that last item. MOFD has been very clear with East Bay Mud about not only our belief that they need to be, but that we believe
Given that many of these hydrants and water lines are old, coupled with the continuous ground movements, construction and traffic. It is unlikely that all the hydrants currently would pass an inspection recommended by the NFPA. I've had meetings with Michael Ambrose from East Bay Mud to discuss the possibility of a dedicated inspection program. While Michael still thinks that annual inspections are too much, given that East Bay Mud maintains over 28,000 hydrants. He would like to prioritize inspection and frequency based on metrics. Such as the age of a hydrant, amount of nearby fuel, high risk structures, i.e. schools and population centers. Michael was going to discuss the next up to one of his managers. Even though East Bay Mud concluded that there was a low failure rate amongst the sample hydrants. The hydrants that East Bay Mud inspected within the last five years were those that required maintenance due to collisions within traffic and or construction issues. Therefore, some type of routine fire hydrant inspection plan that tests the integrity of the hydrants and the connections. While establishing the current water pressure is needed. This is what I'm asking for. In Michael's defense, he pointed out that none of the Bay Area fire departments have requested the need for fire hydrant inspections. I continue to encourage Chief Wannaker to push for proper inspections. Let us set the MOFD apart from the status quo. That concludes our written public comment and we do not have any hands raised.
Directors, I may just respond to that last item. MOFD has been very clear with East Bay Mud about not only our belief that they need to be, but are that we believe East Bay Mud has an obligation to inspect them. East Bay Mud has been, has pointed out that as a regional agency, they are not subject to our jurisdiction. But as I've said before, I continue to believe that East Bay Mud has not only the responsibility, but the obligation to maintain their water system. And that while we certainly will continue to apply pressure as we are able. The appropriate route for residents to relay their concerns is to their elected representative, Marguerite Young, on the East Bay Mud Board.
Big things to chief. So if there's no further comment, Marcia, we will close the public comment. Problems that are not on the agenda. Then we go to the consent agenda items 7.1 through 7.5. Do we have anyone that? Wants to make any comments on these items? Okay.
No, I'll make a motion to. To accept consent agenda 7.1, 7.5 and.
Second that motion.
Okay, Marcia, since there wasn't anywhere that wanted to come, I guess we have officially closed the public comment on those things. So we have a motion in front of us, Marcia, you want to take a?
Director Dan Ziger.
I.
Director Donner.
I.
Director Jex.
I.
President Jordan.
I. Okay, the motion passes. Now we move on on the regular agenda to the PARs OPEB pre-funding and pension rate stabilization trust program annual client review. Gentlemen. I guess ladies and gentlemen, sorry, I didn't, we got a whole bunch of people in here, yes.
Yeah. Thank you. Glad to be here, Mitch Barker with PARs. I was advised to shorten our presentation and get to the point, so. Instead of having our normal background for anybody that might be new, we're going to go straight to the plan info summary. Whoever's controlling the slides, if you'll move forward, that would be great. Keep going, keep going. And there we go, I'll turn it over to Angela Tang, your client service coordinator, and she'll get into the details. But we stand ready for questions, thank you.
Welcome Angela.
Thank you. So on this page, we're going to go ahead and provide you with a summary of the OPEB plan, which started back in April of 2015. The plan is currently in the capital appreciation index plus strategy, which Andrew will go into more details in a couple of pages here. But the second half of this page gives you information on the account. So as of June 30th, we have received $2.1 million in contribution. We've seen a total investment earnings of $873,000, giving us the total account balance of 2.9 million as of the end of June. Moving on to the next page, this page provides you with a graphical representation of those contributions that have come in over the years, as well as the growth of the assets. And again, you'll see that 2.9 million as of the end of June there. Moving along the next two pages, we've included some information from the most recent actuary report. It does have the measurement date of June 30th, 2020. If you'll go ahead and just skip to the next page, we'll go ahead and focus on this page regarding some of the information provided on the actuary report. The discount rate provided at the time was a 6.25% with the. With the assets at 1.9 million, giving the district that 12.3% funded. The actuarially determined contribution was a little over $1.5 million and annual benefit scene was around 925,000. So moving along, we'll go ahead and go into more details about the pension. So on the next page, you'll see a summary of the pension information, which started back in January of 2017. This is similarly in that capital appreciation index plus strategy. For the pension side, we've seen a total of $4.3 million in contribution and 1.2 million in total investment earnings. Gave us that total 5.5 million as of the end of June in the pension account. So similar to what you saw on the OPEB side, the next page provides you have a look at the, with a graphical representation of those contributions that have come in. As well as the build up the assets. The next page gives you a look at the funding status for the district and this is provided to us by Gloria Ann. So and it's also provided in the most recent comprehensive annual financial report. So this is as of June 30th of 2020. At the time, the pension liability was at $206 million with the funded ratio for Sisera of 87%. The employer contribution for fiscal year ending 2020 was at $5.2 million. And then the discount rate as of December 31st of 2019 was at 7%. All right, with that being said, I'll go ahead and pass it over to Andrew, he can give you a little bit more details on the investment.
Thanks Angela, Marcia, next slide please. You received this packet in advance and I, and I got the same memo that Mitch got in terms of being very brief, so. Got this packet in advance, you can see our economic forecast for 2021 and 2022. You know, just from the numbers that leap off the screen, I think you can kind of get a summary that. We forecast a very strong recovery this year. Growth slowing down next year a little bit, but we're still looking at three and a half, four and a half percent GDP growth rate next year. Improvement on the job front in terms of unemployment declining. We forecast a moderate inflationary environment. In my client meetings over the last couple of weeks, that's probably been the, the one question that I get from committees in terms of, you know, two to two, four. One, nine to two, three next year seems a little bit light, that's the feedback that I get. But we are in the camp that inflation is going to be transitory, that the spikes that we're seeing currently will. We, you know, sort of subdue over the next couple of months and quarters. And the bottom line is that we don't think the Fed is going to raise rates until 2023. So we're sticking with our forecast as of now, zero to 0.25% on the Fed funds rate out until 2023. Marcia, next slide please. The, the performance and what I'd like to do is I like to use the OPEB plan as sort of a proxy. For the pension plan and as much as they are invested in the same. Investment objective, there are some differences between the OPEB plan and the pension plan. The differences are primarily cash flow timings of contributions that we received into the plans. The, the total bottom line, it's not too dissimilar from each other. And since so the, this tends to be an annual review, I'm more focused on maybe that third column over from the left, the one year number. And you know, as you go from the top to the bottom of the screen, and once again, our plan returns are, are represented in the black colored font. Cash equivalents, cash and cash equivalents, 0.03% over the last 12 months. Total fixed income, that would be 0.00%. So our fixed income has not generated anything in the way of positive return over the last 12 months. That's the bad news, I mean, the good news, equities, 42.13%. And really, it gets kind of nice in a meeting like this where we're just kind of cutting to the chase. It's hard to gleam a whole lot of insight from any one of these equity categories that are just up. And just, just very large outsized, you know, performance numbers. Large cap 40.7%, mid cap 49.5%. A small cap a little bit over 60%, 61.5%. International and REITs are kind of the laggards, if you will, but both of those are up over 30%. International 35.2 and REITs 33.7%. So putting it all together with a roughly an 80% stock, 20% bond, cash portfolio. Gross of investment management fee, 30.29%. Given the, the fees that are incurred with the combined balances of pension and OPEB. It's roughly right around 30 basis points. Net, net, you're at 30% over the last 12 months for the period ending June 30th, 2021. Next page please. In terms of positioning, our current positioning, and you can see that from this page, 79% equities. 20% fixed income and 1% in cash. If we were to compare this to, we would say a policy benchmark would be neutral on stocks would be 75%. So we would be 4% overweight in terms of stocks. Cash would be 5% by policy, so by being a 1% cash, we would be 4% underweight cash. And then our, our fixed income would be neutral at a 20% allocation. So that, that has been roughly our policy for, let's say, the last quarter. We've certainly been overweight the majority of the last 12 months in terms of equities. And then that has paid dividends, given the, the performance numbers that you saw on the previous page where it was, you know, basically zero for stocks, I'm sorry, zero for cash and zero for fixed income. The. The, the next page just covers the underlying index, next page please, I'm sorry. On two more pages please. And one more, yeah, that one. This is just the underlying index funds that we're invested in and the performance over the one, three, five and 10 year periods of time. I was asked by staff to provide recommendations, if any, to the board. And, and I would say this, with OPEB, my recommendation, we can continue doing what you're doing. You've been funding it consistently since inception. You've taken aggressive stance, a long-term time horizon, you've employed that. Your funding ratio is still at 12%. So if we were to have an unfortunate 12 month period of time or 24 month period of time in terms of capital markets. It doesn't matter because it, it's not going to, it's not going to derail you from achieving your long-term overriding goal. So, so OPEB continued to do what you do, 6.25%. We would still sign off on that as a reasonable discount rate from, for your planned assets and liabilities. With pension though, I would, I would throw this out. I think the slide that Paris put together a second goes showed that the pension liability, the funding ratio is at 87%. If, if you combine this five, five and a half, five and a half million dollars of assets, it probably puts you right around 90% funding ratio. I think that there might be some merit in terms of potentially looking at taking a little bit less risk. Given, given the healthy funding ratio currently that the pension plan maintains. Certainly if you were to share with me that over the next one to three years, you were thinking about taking some of these assets. And, and sending them to Sisera to maybe pay down some liability tranche. That certainly would motivate me to, to make a more conservative recommendation. For, for, for the, the plan asset allocation. So. You know, I think that at the very least, perhaps Highmark staff, looking at potential more conservative asset allocation models might make sense. But, but, but if you give me an alternative, if you give me alternative feedback in terms of, you know what, we're still in it for the long haul. We still want to be aggressive in our asset allocation positioning. You know, I, I think that our experience in, in the pension plan, we, we've gone through the fourth quarter of 2018. Where we were down 12, 13%. And certainly we went together through the experience of 2020 where that six week period of time, we were probably down 26 to 27%. So, so certainly that didn't shake the wherewithal of, of the district in terms of maintaining a, an asset allocation policy of 70 or maintaining the risk encumbered with the asset allocation policy of 75 to 80% equities. So, so I know that you have the ability to withstand this risk. But, but you know, perhaps do we need to take that risk at a 90% funding ratio? We may wish to look at that over the next couple of weeks after this meeting. So, so with that, I'll sort of pause and, and see if there's any questions from, from staff or, or the board.
Hi, this is Director Dan Ziger. Just, I mean, I'm, I'm really impressed on the, the rate of returns that we've gotten, just to put this into perspective for myself, as well as anyone. Tuning in, in the same period, the one year period, what was, what was like the Dow Jones average for that period, you know?
I don't know what Dow Jones was, but.
I'm just thinking of that as a common one, everybody knows and uses and, I mean, can you just give me some, I don't see it here, just give me some comparative.
A couple of pages, Marcia, I think they, they put the, the actual return and then they put the S and D on there, for example.
Yes, President Jordan, so we had it the second go. One more previous page. One, two, three, four, five, seventh row from the top, S and P 500, one year, 40.79%.
Okay. So I guess I, I don't, is anybody else have questions, I don't want to. But in here.
I think the last conversation, this is Director Jex. With the poor performance on the fixed income. But that we had, I think we made comment, or at least I remember raising the issue of why we had anything in it.
I think, yeah, I took that note down in my, my notes from the meeting. I don't remember my exact answer at that time, but, but hopefully it was something like this. Within the capital appreciation investment objective where we have 65 to 85% in equities. 10 to 30% in bonds. If, if I was filling out a blue book in, in, in my MBA course or even undergrad finance. Something along the lines of when you're at 78, 79, 80% in equities. The incremental 1% Director Jackson, you put into equity, so going from 80 to 81, 81 to 82, 82 to 83, etc. You don't get a whole lot of incremental pickup in terms of expected return. You do get a whole lot of pickup in terms of incremental risk. And so I know that sometimes, you know, textbook wonky answers aren't so satisfying to, you know, the common person. But that would be the answer. It, it's more of a risk and reward, a risk mitigator. There are other times outside of the last 12 months where, you know, having 20% in, in cash or fixed income, even if it doesn't do anything. Which clearly it hasn't done anything over the last 12 months. It can sort of preserve some of the capital in, in periods where stocks aren't generating 42.18%. And, and then stocks might be generating minus 20, minus 15, minus 25, something along those, along those lines. So, so that is the answer and, and it might not be satisfying, but, but, but that's the answer I would offer.
What do you expect our portfolio over the next 20 years to earn on average?
On average, 20 year horizon capital appreciation, 6.62. Those are our most recent revised long-term, and when I say hour, it's Highmark Capital, Highmark Capital's long-term investment predictions, so 6.6.
So the. The, the Sarah folks assume 7%. So when we say that it's 87% funded, that wouldn't agree with your forecast.
The 87% funded, what, what I'm doing on the math there is, is while I'm taking their 87%. And I'm adding this, what, five and a half percent, and I think your assets, what do you have, President Jordan's, 170, 175?
No, but, but they assume a 7% rate of return in their portfolio, which they've never achieved on average. They've underachieved on a regular basis, that's why we have a pension deficit, you might know. Okay, and we, because we had a fully funded pension in 2005. Completely funded and since then, we now have 100 and, well, we have a, according to their numbers, a $25 million pension deficit. It's been much higher than that in the past. But if we use a more reasonable rate of return like yours even, or, or I would argue that was given the inflation that we are expecting or not expecting. The point is, they came up with that number assuming a sub percent discount rate and a sub percent rate of return in their portfolio, both of which are aggressive. In my opinion.
I mean.
Therefore, we're not really 87% funded, they are not really 87% funded, that's why we have a trust.
That's also the, one of the questions you raised about short term, whether or not we'd want to. Give additional money over to Sisera to reduce that, that I wouldn't. That's, that's the reason we set this up, is because of their performance and unrealistic revenue stream. That we made the decision to do this, so I would certainly not, and we already gave him $28 million that has not performed.
I'm, I'm just, I, I serve, I serve the district, I serve the board, so I don't want to assume anything. So, so with that, that is why I threw out the, if you were thinking about doing this.
I think a number of counties and organizations around the state did that, like 30 or 40. like 30 or 40 or 50 of them in the last 10 years, maybe 15 years. 100% of them were a mistake to give the, to their pension folks extra money and pay down their debts because they all underperformed their expectations. So, and there was been a lot of controversy about that concept. So I personally wouldn't be in favor of anything like that. And we got, you know, a lot of pushback from our community, from the newspapers, from the finance people. You know, they've already got a lot of our money to deal with. And they, they have different portfolio, um, expectations and investment practices than some people may agree with.
Perfect feedback. This is the feedback that I'm looking for. Inasmuch as we don't get together quarterly and we usually have a once-a-year opportunity to meet, this is the feedback that I need. So in terms of a recommendation, my recommendation is this, stay the course. Stay the course of OPEB, stay the course of pension, and, um, we'll keep doing what we do.
Any more questions from the board?
Oh, well said, well said.
Great presentation. Thank you. Keep up the, uh, the good work.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate your business.
Take care. Bye-bye now.
Thank you.
Okay, Marcia. So do we, I guess we're done with that one. Uh, on to the, whoa. Marcia, you're, uh, okay. So is there any public comment on, uh, item 8.1?
We have not received written public comment. We do not have any hands raised.
Okay, we can, oops, I gotta get rid of this clothes. Okay, so I'm going to close the public comment, our agenda item 8.1. Then we'll move on to 8.2, establishing the fiscal year 2021, 2022 fire flow tax rates for the Arinda and Maraga service zones.
Good evening, directors. At the June 2021 board meeting, during discussion of item 9.1, two directors requested a future agenda item review MOFD's fire flow tax. This topic has previously been addressed on several occasions, including a comprehensive report presented as item 8.5, the June 15th, 2016 regular board meeting. A copy of that staff report is attached. Prior reviews of this issue have not resulted in changes to the district's revenue model or accounting. Uh, and then I will, I will not read the directors, the full report beyond just noting, uh, the 2006, 2007, when, uh, by resolution, the board increased fire flow tax in Arinda, uh, at six cents while leaving it at five cents in Maraga. Now, with the exception of that year, uh, which was an anomaly in the district's 23-year history, every other year, the, the, um, fire flow taxes have been set the same in both districts. It's worth noting that in the Maraga service zone, uh, which also includes a number of homes in Arinda, the fire flow tax is capped at 30 cents. In the Arinda fire flows, or in the Arinda service zone, uh, which is the old Arinda fire protection district, the fire flow tax is capped at six cents. And that, uh, as I addressed in the staff report, I believe it would be very difficult to, to try to disentangle the accounting of the, both the services provided and the, the revenue received from the various service zones and subdivisions of the district. Because as a result of board direction in 1999, the accounting of the, the two zones was merged. And I suggest it would be very difficult, uh, to disentangle that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board or the public may have on this topic.
So not hearing anything from the board, I'll open this to public comment.
We have received one, uh, written public comment this afternoon at 1:00 PM, which was forwarded to the board and placed on our, uh, website from, uh, Mr. Olson. Mr. Olson, um, also has raised his hand to comment on the information that he sent earlier.
Great.
I am unmuting Mr. Olson.
Evening, Mr. Olson. How are you? Dick, you're still on mute. It looks like somebody's still got him on mute.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay, good. Thank you. Good, good evening, board members. I prepared a history of the Maraga Zone and Arinda Zone fire flow taxes that was forwarded to you this afternoon. I hope you've had an opportunity to look at it. I have no additional comments to share with you this evening beyond that document, but I would be happy to answer any questions you might have relative to that history. Thank you. That's the extent of what I wanted to, wanted to offer this evening.
It was a very good memo. Thank you for the history.
You're very welcome. It was my, it was my pleasure. It took a little time. And I had a great deal of help from former acting chief Cooper and also from former, um, Maraga Fire District Commissioner Gordon Nathan in preparing it.
Thank you, Dick.
Thanks, Dick. Okay, Marcia.
We have the, uh, Mayor of Town of Maraga, Mike McClure. I'm unmuting.
Welcome, Mayor McClure.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to read the letter from the Maraga Town Council who voted unanimously in favor of this. The topic is opposition to an increase in the fire flow tax rate for the Maraga fire flow tax zone. Dear MOFD Chair Jorgens and Board Directors, we understand that at your board meeting of July 21, 2021, you will discuss the fire flow tax and adopt the rates for fiscal year 2122. We also understand that a question has been raised by a board member as to whether the rate paid by property owners in the Maraga fire flow tax zone, which includes all of the town of Maraga, as well as 840 parcels in the city of Arinda and additional parcels in unincorporated Contra Costa County should be increased. On behalf of our constituents, we firmly oppose the imposition of a rate that is higher for property owners in the Maraga fire flow tax zone than property owners in the Arinda fire flow tax zone. Funding of MOFD is addressed multiple times, including as documented in the June 15, 2016 MOFD staff report entitled, quote, "Analysis of Funding Equity Between Taxpayers of Arinda and Maraga," end quote. This report states that the intent at formation was to have an integrated fire district with no separation by service zone and an equalized fire flow tax throughout the district. MOFD's actions in 1999 to combine financial operating and capital accounts reflect MOFD's commitment to integrated fire services. Reverting to separate accounting from Raga and Arinda, fire flow tax zones may result in a finding that property owners in the Maraga fire flow tax zone pay relatively more for their share of service due to the higher costs of providing service in the Arinda fire flow tax zone due to multiple factors. These factors include the following. Large portions of the Arinda fire flow tax zone are in a CAL FIRE designated, very high fire hazard severity zone. Emergency responses to many properties in the Arinda fire flow tax zone are impeded due to the rural, narrow and hilly nature of many roads, the necessity of ongoing extensive fire prevention work in North Arinda, inadequate water supply issues in parts of North Arinda, and that three of the five MOFD fire stations are in Arinda. The higher fire insurance rates that many who live in the Arinda fire flow tax zone pay is a clear indication of why those who live in the Arinda fire flow tax zone should actually pay more for fire services than MOFD provides. There is no articulated basis for assessing property owners in the Maraga fire phone tax zone a higher fire flow tax. We are aware of no analysis that shows property owners in Maraga fire flow tax zone are not contributing their fair share to MOFD, nor are we aware of funding shortfalls or the need for capital improvements for property owners in the Maraga fire flow tax zone. MFOD's 2016 analysis of funding equity between taxpayers of Arinda and Maraga explored funding equity and concluded that the intent of MOFD was to provide integrated fire services and that MOFD has provided all services on an integrated basis. We oppose another study that would divert funding and staff resources away from the mission of fire protection and emergency medical services. On behalf of our constituents, we urge MOFD board to approve a continued six-cent fire flow tax rate for property owners in both the Arinda and Maraga fire flow tax zones and not spend taxpayer dollars on an expensive analysis to explore changes to the integrated system to deliver fire services that benefit rate payers in all areas of MOFD. End of letter. And finally, I'd like to personally add that the Maraga fire flow tax rate was increased from six cents to 30 cents in 1992 based on expected cuts in funding during a recession. The funding cuts never happened, and there is no current basis for a 30-cent fire flow tax rate for Maraga. I plan to seek a ballot measure from Raga to reset the fire flow tax rate to the original six cents consistent with Arinda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, Mayor McClure.
I am unmuting Frank Spurling.
Welcome, Mr. Spurling.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, Directors, Chief, Members of the public, my name is Frank Spurling, a longtime resident of Maraga and current resident of Oakland. I was elected to the Maraga Town Council and served as mayor. Additionally, I was elected to the MOFD Board of Directors and served as president. While I had planned in providing a perspective on the history of the fire flow tax and rationale for rate parity between the Arinda and Maraga zones, I must say that staff's excellent report and historical documentation, along with Dick Olson's supplemental comments that the board received tonight clearly makes any discussion surrounding increasing the fire flow tax in the Maraga service zone moot. However, I believe that there is a teachable moment tonight that cannot be ignored. The short story is, directors, please do your homework. Flushing this statement out, please remember that questions and comments you make in the public view are taken very seriously and oftentimes with the public filling in the blanks with a negative scenario. Whether those statements will revolve around merging into the CON FIRE organization or gee, I wonder why we don't increase the fire flow tax rate in Maraga, you can see the ramifications of such statements. As a public official, I oftentimes ask questions to staff before a meeting to ensure that I was familiar with all of the issues being addressed. If you did the same, you too could help ensure a more smoothly run meeting with less misunderstandings by the public. The phrase seven and a half cents doesn't mean a heck of a lot comes from the musical The Pajama Game. However, in Maraga and Arinda, going from six cents to possibly seven, seven and a half cents, or whatever, does mean a heck of a lot. Not in terms of dollars and cents, but in terms of your credibility and the perception that you are all on top of things. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm unmuting David Trotter.
Uh, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the, the board. Uh, my name is David Trotter, resident of Maraga. Spent, uh, 12 years from 2006 to 2018 on the Maraga Town Council, three years as mayor. Uh, I want to echo and support the other comments you've, you've previously received. And, uh, just would urge you to follow the excellent staff report and recommendation from Chief Winnaker and adopt the, the draft proposed resolution continuing to have rate parity in the setting of the fire flow tax in, uh, both communities. There, there's a little history here. I mean, the, this bugaboo, um, mostly brought by folks in Arinda that somehow they're paying more than their fair share of services was the subject of not one, not two, but three separate tri-agency efforts. I was involved in two of them between 2009 and my, my, ending my tour, uh, tour of duty in 2018. Where at that time, the staff and your, your fire chief, it was before, I believe, Chief Winnaker's time, uh, looked exhaustively at all of these questions and concluded that when you consider the level of service and the cost of providing services, um, the, the actual, you know, allocation of resources and the monies that were spent basically mirrored quite closely the financial contributions and the need for higher, more, more expensive service in Arinda. And so this issue keeps coming back and it's time, I think, for the, for, just like you did, uh, one more recently and, and saying, we're not going to go into that whole thing with Arinda Fair again. I think it's time to put a stake in the heart of this particular subject as well. And there's a whole bunch of reasons for that. I mean, it's, it's basically a matter of equity and fairness. You have, you know, discrimination, you know, either in favor of Maraga or, or, or in, in favor of Arinda or against Maraga has political repercussions, as you can see. The administrative issues of, of, you know, going from an integrated set of, of financial accounting and cost accounting to justify such an action is extremely difficult, as the chief has said. And, uh, I would basically urge you to, um, follow the staff recommendation, consider this issue to be closed and maintain rate parity in terms of setting fire flow taxes. And if at some point in the future, you decide that you, you, you have some need for revenue and you can make a case that you would have to go to Arinda and get a vote to increase. Um, and, and, you know, parity is probably something could be justified. The point is that three of the five of you, um, depend in one form or another for votes from Maraga residents to have your seats. And understand that we're, we're watching, we're paying very close attention. It would ask you to consider that in the actions that you're being asked to take tonight and to, um, approve what Chief Winnaker has proposed as the right path forward for the Maraga and the Fire District. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotter.
And that concludes our hands raised. So we have, someone just raised their hand. I am unmuting MOFD board meeting.
Uh, can you hear me okay?
Sure. Who is this again? I'm sorry.
This, this is Gordon Nathan. Uh, I'm sorry, uh, first of all, I, I want to let Dick know I finally figured out how to get on the system. Uh, so here I am, and I just wanted to, uh, reiterate my support, uh, for leaving this thing alone. And, uh, without going back into a lot of history, which I'm sure Dick has already covered very, very well. We, there's no need to rehash, uh, this, uh, equity situation. It's been discussed many, many times and brought to both, uh, the city of Arinda, uh, city council and the town council in Maraga, uh, but specifically in Arinda. And they don't even want to discuss, at least at the time, they didn't want to discuss it any further. There's no need for it. Uh, and it's been well pointed out. So I just want to throw in my two cents to, to say that, you know, I lived through this, uh, as Dick Olson did and a number of other, uh, residents of both communities, uh, when we formed the new district. And, uh, we tried to, and I think we did take into account the very things that are being discussed here. The LAFCO agreement and, uh, that stated very clearly also the equity in how this was set up. And they agreed with us 100%. So having said that, I, I just want to put in my, my two cents. And my last comment is, Frank, it's good to see you again. And I'm glad I was off the board when you got there because I don't think I could wear a tuxedo as well as you to any board meeting. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marcia, do we have any other comments?
That concludes our raised hands.
Okay, I will close the public comment then. Do we have any board discussion?
Yeah, this is Director Danziger. I would just like to thank, uh, the former directors and, uh, Mayor McClure for, uh, for their comments tonight. I support, um, maintaining the six, six cents in, uh, Maraga and Arinda, and I'm ready to move on.
Any other comments? So I guess I, I would just say that, you know, it appears there, um, one, one thing that nobody talked about tonight was the absolute rate. Because, you know, it started for the first nine years of our, our organization, uh, the rate was five cents in both cities. And, or both zones, sorry. And, uh, and then it got raised in Arinda first, actually. And it was uneven for the only time in the whole history. It went to six cents in Arinda and was five cents in Maraga. And then the next year, Maraga was also raised to six cents. And, um, so I, I was actually, in addition to the, the other questions, asking also just about the general rate, uh, and I didn't hear anybody say they necessarily wanted or didn't want a lower rate tonight. Uh, I think however, that given the time constraints that we have, we have to make a decision at this meeting. I would certainly be, so we don't really have time to discuss whether we need to have, you know, it'd be six cents or five cents. And so I. And so I guess I would propose, I would move that we, that we leave it at six cents in both cities for this year.
Ready for a motion? I'll have to make one.
Yes, go ahead. I, I would say, go ahead.
We approve the six cents for Arinda and Maraga as outlined in Chief Winnaker's recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
And just for, for, for clarification, that would be Resolution Number twenty-one dash oh seven.
Correct, right. Okay, Marcia, we have a motion in a second.
I.
Director Donner.
I.
Director Jex.
Hi.
President Jorgens.
Hi.
Okay, on to regular agenda item eight point three. Adopt Resolution twenty-one dash fourteen, classifying the various components of fund balances as defined in Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number fifty-four and adopting a revised fund balance policy.
Good evening, directors. The district's fund balance policy requires annual review by the board. The policy has been reviewed along with various risk areas facing the district. The district faces risk in the areas of COVID-nineteen, necessary capital projects, pension costs, and unfunded liabilities. The existing policy requires the district to maintain a minimum fund balance of unrestricted fund balance in the general fund of at least seventeen percent of budgeted general fund revenue at fiscal year end with a goal of achieving a fifty percent year-end general fund balance in the long term. Staff recommends the board adopt Resolution twenty-one dash fourteen, which includes no changes to the current fund balance policy. This concludes my introduction.
Okay, I'll open this up to public comment then for on item eight point three.
We do not have any hands raised or written public comment.
Okay, I'll close the public comment period on item eight point three, three then. Do we have any board discussion?
No, I'm in favor of maintaining the, the fund balance policy as is, as we, as in this report.
So do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-one dash fourteen, as stated in, in item eight point three.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Marcia, you want to take the rule call?
Director Danziger.
I.
Director Donner.
I.
Director Jex.
Hi.
President Jorgens.
Hi.
Okay, the motion passes.
All right.
On to item eight point four. This is the September and December twenty twenty-one board meeting dates.
Good evening, directors. At the December sixteenth, twenty twenty board meeting, the board approved the twenty twenty-one regular board meeting schedule, which included the dates of September fifteen and December fifteen, twenty twenty-one. The board also directed staff to place on the July twenty twenty-one agenda to discuss requests received from directors to move the September fifteen and December fifteen, twenty twenty-one board meetings to different dates.
So was there a proposal somebody made that wants to make to change those dates?
Wasn't me.
My, my, my recollection is that I thought there was a, a number of conflict issues by one or two of the directors. I don't.
I don't have any conflicts.
I, I don't either.
I don't either.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with it as well.
It's, it sounds like we're not changing anything. So I don't know how we, we, we don't do something cheap. We usually do do, we approve things, but.
Yes, sir. No, no, this was advisory. If there is no direction, that, that direction has been received.
Okay, thank you. I guess I was supposed to ask for public comment on that. I'm sorry, but it was more of a procedural question.
We do not have any hands raised or received.
And I'm going to close the public comment then. So on to item, one more there for you. Here we go, item eight point five, plan for return to in-person board meetings and the option to provide virtual public access to public meetings beginning October twenty twenty-one.
Good evening, directors. On March seventeenth, twenty twenty, the Governor of California issued Executive Order N twenty-nine dash twenty, suspending teleconference restrictions of the Brown Act due to COVID-nineteen pandemic. On March twentieth, twenty twenty, the Maraga and the Fire District held its first virtual public board meeting. Subsequently, all formal public meetings continue to meet remotely via the Zoom application, which allowed full verbal and written public participation. In June twenty twenty-one, an executive order was issued that requires public agencies to return to in-person public meetings effective October first, twenty twenty-one. Any local agency meetings taking place after that time must ensure physical public access to all meeting locations. Beginning October twenty twenty-one, the district will hold all public meetings in person as required by state law. At the June twenty twenty-one board meeting, a member of the board requested an agenda item to discuss future board meetings. Staff has begun to plan for return to in-person meetings following over a year of all virtual meetings because of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Public participation in board meetings increased significantly during the pandemic when board meetings were held virtually. While the district is required to hold all public meetings in person beginning October twenty twenty-one, the district may also provide additional access to the public via a virtual option. Virtual public meeting access is not required by state law following return to in-person meetings. Staff requests board direction regarding whether the district should provide optional virtual public access to public meetings beginning in October twenty twenty-one. Virtual public access will require district investment, new equipment, and may be challenging to offer as the district does not own a meeting space and rotates meeting locations on a monthly basis. One of the goals of FY twenty-two is to implement digital board meeting agendas and packets in order to improve accessibility and efficiency. The district is contracted with Granicus to implement its peak agenda management software. The software implementation process has started, and the first digital agenda and packet is scheduled for the October twenty twenty-one board meeting. The software is designed for board members to electronically access the agenda and packet during the board meetings using a laptop or tablet. The district currently does not provide a laptop or tablet to board members, and I should note that with this new software, there will still be the option of a hard copy paper agenda for board members who so prefer. There are several challenges that we need to identify with regard to holding public meetings in person and virtually at the same time. First, as the district does not own a room to hold public board meetings, as a result, the district uses rooms that belong to other public agencies and are not always available. Several different locations are used due to scheduling conflicts. In addition, the district attempts to hold public meetings in both Maraga and Arinda on a rotating basis. The district has to use portable audio equipment to record board meetings and is required to move the equipment back and forth between the administrative office and the meeting locations. The district also has to store all equipment administration where there are severe space limitations. The district is reliant on internet systems that are available at the various board meeting locations as well. The district does not own video equipment, does not provide laptops or other technology devices to board members for use of public meetings. To host public meetings in person and virtually at the same time will require the following. A room that is large enough for board members and staff to spread out sufficiently to reduce audio feedback. Also needs to provide a room that is large enough for continued social distancing and COVID safety protocols. Many of the rooms the district has used in the past, such as the Sarge Little Hale Room in Arinda and the Maraga, the Maraga Library Community Room are very likely too small for this. We also, in order to hold both virtual and in-person meetings, require stable internet access with adequate band, broad band, geez, adequate bandwidth and connectivity. Laptops or tablets or other technology with cameras and microphones for each board member or a centralized camera and associated system to allow board members to be seen and heard at the same time. Staff has identified three options for beginning in October twenty twenty-one and seeking board direction with regard to how to proceed. First is going back to in-person meeting only with no remote participation to our pre-pandemic standard. Meeting will be audio recorded only using existing district-owned equipment. District will need to use a large enough room to provide for continued social distancing requirements. And up to two board members could participate in the public meeting via telephone as long as three board members attend the public meetings in person, which is the same standard that applied in the pre-pandemic era. Obviously, there is no fiscal impact to this option as all of these, all the equipment and the protocols for this, this course of action are currently present. A second option is using in-person or virtual public access and participation using a Zoom room, which is a proprietary product offered by Zoom. This would require wireless internet access with adequate bandwidth and connectivity, require purchase of technology that may include an encoder, camera, audio and/or cart to move it all around, a Zoom room, software annual subscription, and, and a room of appropriate size. It would also require a dedicated computer with a camera point at the board, and as before, the board members, three would attend, would be required to pretend, attend in person and two could participate virtually. We estimate twenty-two, thirty thousand dollars with equipment and subscriptions to carry out this option. We also could do a similar option, but not using Zoom room, just using Zoom as we are now. That would require a combination of either of laptops or other equipment and an audiovisual mix to allow both the board to be seen and heard and speakers to be seen and heard. There is a, a smaller estimated impact due to the, the software being something we already have, but there would be equipment purchases. And then there's a third option, there are a fourth option that's not identified here, which we're exploring, which would be use of the, the city and the town, their facilities where they hold their board meetings and contract for both the use of the space and for the city to provide staff on contract that can operate the existing audiovisual equipment that is present in those locations. Obviously, that is pending the availability of those rooms. With regard to the options, what we're seeking is the, the board's direction as far as a, a general theme of those various options so that we can begin refining those and, and actually seeking out quotes and operating systems and come back to the board with a, a fully flushed out proposal at the August meeting.
We, I guess we should first get a public comment on this.
We do not have any hands raised, and we've not received any written public comment.
Okay, so I'll close the public comment. Do we have any board questions, comments?
Chief, this is Director Jex. Do you, we know what the two cities are going to do on their meetings?
Well, yes, sir. They're, they're going to return. They, they've always had the option to, to stream because they have, they, they own the fixed, fixed facility with the, with the audiovisual equipment. We know they will be doing that. We do not know if they will be enabling virtual participation, but we've reached out to them, both, one, to determine the availability of their space and their staff for us to, to establish an agreement to use those, and secondly, to determine what they are going to be doing with the, obviously, a, a proposed course of action here is that if they are going to a virtual system or a combined, a hybrid, present virtual, and their facilities are available, then the option may exist to piggyback on, on the steps they're taking, using the, the equipment and the expertise they're developing to do that.
So even if we don't do this, it sounded like we had to have appropriate spacing and things, and you said the two rooms we're currently using don't work, so whose rooms are we going to use?
We've reached out to, I said, sir, the city and town who do have in the space, and specifically in the case of the city of Arinda at the library, the auditorium there is much larger and allows for significant social distancing. We're also reaching out to several other, basically faith-based operations that have the space where we could hold a, a more dispersed meeting, so we're, we're working through the options of what large spaces are available. Hopefully, with the intent of finding something that would be available and more centrally located so that we would not have the, the requirement to move the meeting month to month.
That makes sense. Is, well, I mean, is it your? Some good opinions from Maraga today. Does the Maraga have a similar kind of facility that they're going to be meeting, do you think?
Their, their town hall space is larger than the ones we use, but significantly smaller than Arinda's. I, I do not know what the, the social distancing and occupancy requirements are going to be in October.
What's the compensation that we paid for use of facilities historically, Lori Ann?
We have not, sir. We, the, the use of the Sarge Little Hale and the, and the library or the Hacienda, we've been there, that, that's not something, correct me if I'm wrong, please, Lori Ann, I don't believe that's something we paid for in the past.
Okay.
But we would, you would expect we would, if nothing else, pay for the staff at the, at the cities for the equipment and things.
Yes, sir. It's, yeah, the, yes, sir, the, the folks to operate the equipment or person to operate the equipment.
I guess my, you know, since we're probably going to be in the room anyway, it sounds like, or at least one of these two rooms, just for space purposes. I certainly am supportive of having more participation from the public in these meetings, and I think audio is okay, but I think having it be generally better access is a good thing. So, you know, I, I think we should be willing to accommodate that if it's reasonably possible and not crazy expensive.
Yeah, I would, this is Director Danziger. I, I would agree with you. I think the virtual participation at all levels has, has increased significantly. I mean, personally, I've been able to attend, you know, East Bay Mud, East Bay Regional Parks, Maraga, Arinda, you know, so many more meetings, and I see from the participation that we get, I mean, I think it would be great to be able to continue some form of virtual participation at the public meetings where, where people can comment and, and and, you know, speak with the board. And Chief, I, I just wanted to mention one, one other possibility. I mean, I don't know what we're going to reach here tonight, but there's also the possibility that I know is done by some others where if, if it doesn't work out with, with with Arinda, Maraga, that we actually could just hire a company that could come in and film our meetings and, and there's, there's, you know, video remote video companies that can come and do that kind of work and maybe I, I would just think that maybe that's another option that we could look at.
Yes, sir, we can. My, my experience with them is it's very expensive and that, that expense goes up over time, not down, relative to a one-time investment in, in equipment that the district would own or probably the much more nominal cost of hiring city or town staff to support the brief periods we need this for.
Yeah, I, I, well, I, I do know, and just doing a little bit of research that you know, just for everybody's information, I, I do know that the, the ballpark figure that I saw for doing this type of work was about twenty-five hundred dollars a meeting that would last, you know, be whatever, however long the meeting lasts, and so that is a significant amount of money, I think.
So it seems to me that, you know, I think the option that you said, which was to, if we're going to hopefully be able to use one of the cities or towns meeting rooms, just have a meeting, that hiring the extra staff person to run the camera and the whatever else has to go on, or training one of our people or whatever, sounds like a pretty good option, but it would be interesting to know what they want to charge us for that.
And Chief, I, I just want to ask this question too, because I think this was, you know, a, a district policy even before I was on the board that we tend to go from Maraga to Arinda, you know, back and forth each month when we have in-person meetings. And I mean, is that something that? I mean, I like that idea, you know, that we, that we go back and forth, but is, is that a actual a policy that we have or it's just something that we've done? I mean, is it?
Yes, sir, it's board direction. So I, I think ideally from our perspective would be to identify a location, a central location that is right on or adjacent to the border of the two communities. And then obviously with the potential for a virtual option, that may reduce some of the, the, the need for the rotation, especially for an essential location as residents could participate virtually. And if that, if that option does provide reduced logistics with regard to having to move things and to set things up at different locations and so forth, that would certainly be something I believe the board should consider, if done in conjunction with that virtual option that would allow residents to participate from the comfort of their homes.
Yeah, yes.
Well, I guess one trade-off, if, if we're, as an example, using the city of Arinda's equipment and we have to pay one of their people, but at the same time, we're spending a bunch of time and effort, I don't know whether it costs anything, but certainly people carrying the equipment from the headquarters over to whatever building we're using, setting it all up and then turning it all down and carrying it back out isn't it, at least it's a time and energy thing, even if it doesn't cost overtime or something, but so there is a, there is some benefit that we're getting by renting somebody else's.
Yes, sir. It's for forward course of action that's available, and I cannot overemphasize some of these things. As an example, there is a dedicated all-in-one Zoom room piece of technology that comes in the form of fifty-five inch screen with everything built in, which there's a simplicity to, unless you have to move it on a regular basis, at which point you end up with a something with a crack in it. It used to be a, a piece of technology. There's also very limited storage here at Fire Admin, and by limited, I mean a room closet, and that's it. So any, anything that lets us allow, that allows us to access existing equipment somewhere else is certainly will be a recommendation.
I, I totally agree with the issue of, of one location because I know we've had a history of
some injuries as a result of the weight of lifting some of that, some of our staff in the past and moving it.
So is a reasonable course of action to have us have you follow up with the cities and find out what the cost would be and bring that back next time?
Yes, sir. I I think that just sort of the the general thematic, which I believe I've captured, is that the board is interested in a hybrid, both a combination of the required in person and a virtual option. If that's the case, I have the direction I need, and we'll we'll staff that out and bring back recommendations, sir.
I I'm in favor of that.
I am.
I am too.
Okay.
Thank you, Gemma.
Yep.
Good. Thank you, Chief. The next item is item eight point six, approval of salary schedule and increase in district contributions for medical insurance for underrepresented employees effective July 1st, 2021.
Good evening, directors. Historically, district employees receive annual salary increases. The district has employee classifications that are unrepresented, not covered by a memorandum of understanding or separate employment agreements. The last salary increase for these unrepresented employees was 2% effective July 1st, 2020. Staff recommends unrepresented employees receive a 2% wage increase effective July 1st, 2021. This is consistent with the prior fiscal year. The salary schedule has been updated to reflect the 2% salary increase as shown in attachment A. The district's monthly contribution for medical insurance for unrepresented employees is a fixed dollar amount has not increased since January 1st, 2019. During that time, Kaiser Insurance rates have increased 5.9%. Employees have borne the cost of the increase as the district contribution is fixed. Staff recommends the district increase the employer contribution for unrepresented employees excluding the fire chief effective July 1st, 2021 to a fixed dollar amount equal to 90% of the Kaiser rate as shown in the chart below. The projected FY22 total cost of the salary medical insurance increase is $32,270. Recommend action is discussed, deliberate, and approve the salary schedule as shown below.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Do we have any public comment on this?
We do not have any hands raised and not have not received any further comments.
Okay, I'll then I'll close the public comment on item eight point six. Do we have any board discussion? Do I hear a motion to approve this?
I make a motion to approve the salary schedule and increase in in salary for unrepresented employees as as in item eight point six.
Second step.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Marcia?
Director Danziger.
Hi.
Director Donner.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
President Jorgens.
Hi. Okay, the motion is approved. So item eight point, now we're on to item nine, the audit committee. Well, do we have any committee reports from any of these folks? Hearing none, we will go on to item 10. Announcements. Okay. Yes, we don't have any 10.1. How about questions and informational comments from board members and staff on 10.2? Okay, let's go on to Fire Chief Updates 10.3.
Good evening, directors. At least we'll start us off with Human Resources.
Directors. So my update's a little brief today, but earlier this month, we implemented updated Cal OSHA COVID regulations in the workplace. This included things like establishing a vaccination self test form. Modifying our mask and return to work requirements, et cetera. In line with Cal OSHA's emergency temporary standards. However, in the meantime, Contra Costa County has reestablished the recommendations that all individuals wear their masks while indoors as an extra precautionary measure. In, and so moving on from that, in January of 2020, the district moved to an EAP provider. They're called Concern. And Concern actually specializes for first responders. And this move is actually proving to be really great for MOFD. Concern EAP provides a variety of wellness programs, including things like childcare, elder care, financial planning, counseling services, legal services. So great wellness programs and upbeat services. It's all 100% confidential, as I'm sure you're aware, and free to district employees and their spouses. While the district's annual utilization projections for 2021 is very, very high compared against Concern's overall average utilization. So this was a great move for the district and I'm happy, I'm pleased with the projections for the utilization. Beyond that, and the same vein of wellness for the district, we're setting up flu shot clinics for district employees this coming September. And also in September, HR is preparing for open enrollment for CalPERS health plans. So during open enrollment, members can switch health plans, add dependents, delete dependents, et cetera. An open enrollment scheduled to run September 20th through October 15th. And so finally, to close out my report. My, one of my focuses has been to enhance the effectiveness and streamline some of HR's processes. I've mainly been focused on the workers' compensation process, benefits change, annual physicals, and things that we're tapping into pretty regularly and frequently. But one of the biggest projects that I've been researching is researching systems and cost comparisons for a digital forms processing platform to help, again, just enhance our effectiveness and streamline those HR processes in the meantime. And so with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Mary with Finance.
Good evening, directors. I have a brief finance report. Next slide, please, Marcia. The strike team receivable update, our OES strike team receivable to date is $3.3 million. We've received payments of 2.4, so we have a net receivable outstanding of about $929,000. In June, we received payments of $188,000. In July, we received payments to date of $21,000. So payments continue to come in. All the 2021 fire related strike team invoices have been paid. The remaining outstanding invoices are all assignments at OES for HQ COVID support. So those are the only remaining outstanding invoices. We have 27 invoices paid and 13 invoices outstanding. And we're beginning to see wildfire assignments activity in July. We have several members out on strike teams or have had this month. So we have to do wildfire activity coming up for for this season. Next slide, please. COVID vaccine clinic reimbursement, we still do $17,500 from FEMA. In terms of payroll, we are working on processing any salary and benefit changes that will be approved by the board. We are also working on our Gatsby 75 annual or biannual report, and that's to report on payroll and benefits for all active and retired employees. And we're working on year end close and auto prep as that comes comes close. And that's it. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
I have a question. This is Director Jex. The, since the COVID invoices, have those been as slow in paying as perhaps some of the others were?
The OES HQ COVID, actually, some of those invoices have been paid a lot more rapidly than than some of the wildfire invoices. So they're like, as we've said before, there's really no rhyme or reason as to how the invoices get paid. But the OES HQ COVID assignments were really in May and June, April, May, June. So they're more recent. So they haven't it hasn't been taking as long to get invoices for those as it had for the wildfire strike team assignments.
And the vaccine clinics are likely to be very lengthy because that's a FEMA reimbursement, and they're they're famously slow.
Thank you.
Hey. Fire Marshal, I guess.
All right, next slide, please. Thank you. Fire Marshal Isaacs is is out on vacation. I'll be covering his report. We've received a number of complaints, 75 Dead Tree, 127 exterior hazard. Also carried out 477 property transfer inspections, notably compliance with that prior to the the property changing hands is getting much better with a few notable exceptions. Where after the property is sold, it has come to light that the seller was aware of the obligation and did not report it. We defer to the real estate professionals with regard to how those will be resolved, other than insisting on one, the compliance report, and two, the compliance of the property. You'll note there, we've seen significant number, about evenly split of passes and fails. So this this particular provision of the new fire code is turning out to be very effective and is very rapidly becoming just part of the process of selling a property in this area is ensuring it is compliant with the the fire code. We think this has been a win. With regard to overall exterior hazard inspections, we're pushing up towards 1800, past that since this report was produced last week. We've seen initial pass of 578, initial fail of 1220. So we're pretty far out from folks being, having their properties in compliance, but we are hopeful that those numbers will improve as the word gets out and people get around to work that that could have been done in May. We've issued 137 notices to abate. We've had three abatement hearings. And as you may recall from last month, the the board ordered abatement with the caveat that some time for three properties. Of those three properties, one property is nearing completion with just yeoman's work being done with heavy equipment is asked for a 10 day extension, which we have granted as they are closing on compliance very rapidly. Two of the other properties have shown no progress. One work is delayed by presence of a nesting bird, which is, as we went to go get the nesting bird survey prior to executing lean funded work. Nesting birds were identified that have put that work off until the nesting cycle is complete. And the other parcel, no progress. However, it is a is a developed parcel. So we'll be working with council for the permission to access process to make sure that when when we put lean funded crews on that land, it is done with the appropriate legal permissions. Moving through the chipping to year to date, we've chipped 67 days and 309, 67 days year to date, 309 tons. We have an additional 20 days scheduled with an estimated 49 tons. We're currently scheduling the Mezhar Arinda chipper and but we've seen a significant drop off in requests for that service. And those crews have been turning two on the days they are not scheduled for chipping on city owned properties. And we're seeing rapid conversion with getting those properties into compliance. We're also moving forward on our state mandated inspections. As you can see, the numbers are very low as we shift into executing the inspections of the ER2 and B occupancies. Planner view continues to be busy with a steady stream as as folks are doing major remodels and new construction continues. And we're moving forward with the purchase and receipt of the chipper and chipper truck that was approved as part of this year's budget. And then lastly, AB 2911 is a a CAL FIRE requirement that the district report out on portions of the district that are served by a single access or egress route that exceed a certain property or dwelling units per acre density level. We're working on those reports. We'll be submitting those to CAL FIRE as required and then working with the city and the town to ensure their safety element and housing element accurately reflect reflect the AB 2911 requirements. And that's well understood within the the city and town and county staff are unincorporated. I'd be happy to answer any questions about fire prevention for move on to the next item.
Okay.
Good job by your team, Chief.
Yeah, good job. Making a lot of progress.
Yes, yes, sir. They're they're working hard and and they're out just out spreading the good word and they're managing to do it with a cheerful, positive customer service presence that that has netted a steady stream of compliments with regard to sort of the theme is, I didn't particularly like the information they were giving me because it required me to do a lot, but I liked the way in which it was presented. So they've they've done a very good job of of getting the word out, but doing it in a collaborative manner. For Fire Chief Report, we, for 4th of July, we stood up additional resources as part of a countywide task force. We also participated in the Arinda Parade. And then the comm support team and other volunteers staffed our Hilltop Fire Watch lookout that they have in the past utilizing the MGRS and ham radio system. So good to have those extra eyes up there and also a good exercise of our emergency community, our backup emergency communication system in the in the event of a large scale event that could either overwhelm or take out our EBRIC system. We competed, completed prescribed fires at Painted Rock and Campolindo Ridge. This was accomplished both a training opportunity for on a regional basis with units from throughout the area coming out as well as fuel mitigation as we continue to work through the accumulated thatch and duff in those areas and really take a take a hit at that encroaching brush that moved into those areas since cows stopped grazing it approximately 20 years ago. We also completed Caldecott Tunnel Drill. Battalion Chief Lucas Lambert organized this. This was a multi agency drill on June 30th. They shut the tunnel down for the night. They had a number of things they needed to do, and we were able to leverage that opportunity with MOFD, CHP, State Fire Marshal's Office, Oakland and Confire. Of note, the entire system there was run on their new emergency backup generators as a test of what can they do during a major event that could occur during a PSPS. I'll share some pictures on that shortly, but we were able to shut down bore four entirely. We exercised proper traffic blocking patterns to close the tunnel at both ends. Working an Oakland response from the going the wrong way through tunnel four, so headed eastbound in the westbound lanes. And then worked firefighting techniques, access to the unique water supply that serves the Caldecott Tunnel, and then communication between the agencies and the Caltrans Command Center, all in an area where EBRICS does not work because we're in the tunnel. This was a really an excellent training opportunity and something we look forward to continuing to exercise on an annual basis as we we work on these infrequent but high risk skills and threats that are present within our district. On July 11th, at 0913, Engine 41 and Medic 41 responded to an EMS call that was initially reported as a patient experiencing shortness of breath. Shortly after the initial dispatch, the call was updated to inform that CPR instructions were being given. Upon arrival, crews encountered a 73, 73 year old male who was pulseless and apneic. A family member was administering CPR to the patient with dispatch instructions. The crew quickly transitioned the care of the patient and continued CPR. They delivered advanced cardiac life support measures and learned that the patient was in a shockable rhythm. Defibrillation was administered a total of four times on scene before transport occurred to John Muir. While they were still on scene before transporting, they noticed a return of spontaneous circulation. And as they transported the patient to definitive care, the patient was immediately transferred to the cardiac catheterization lab where he's last reported in serious but stable condition. I would just say that in a condition like this, to receive spontaneous circulation in the field is tremendously rare and relies on a number of steps in the chain of survival, beginning with the family giving effective CPR. The crew arriving rapidly, response time was right under five minutes. A seamless transition of that first responder CPR to ACLS. And then the movement through the various tools and adjuncts that are available to a crew in that pre hospital setting. Really remarkable event. A lot of things had to go and did go right on this, both from the dispatch, the family member, the response, the ACLS care, and then the transfer to the receiving hospital. A very good news story. And as I mentioned before, a very infrequent event to get a return, spontaneous return of circulation in a pre hospital setting. We also had on July 10th, Engine 45 and 43 responding to Westbound Highway 24 at Wilder for report of a vehicle fire. Engine 45 was arrived on scene to a fully involved vehicle on the right shoulder. They blocked the right lane to protect the pump panel to give the engineer the opportunity to to pump from a protected position. And then Engine 43 blocked lanes three and four to protect Engine 45. Upon arrival, the captain on 43 noted that the engineer was exposed and directed the engineer to stay in the engine to avoid exiting into the oncoming traffic. That turned out to be prescient as shortly thereafter. The engine was struck by a vehicle on the driver's right side bumper, which took the bumper most of the way off the engine. Had the engineer been out of the vehicle or been exiting the apparatus, it very likely would have been in the path of that vehicle. A good heads up call by the crews on scene, good use of the apparatus to protect the scene. And then a good heads up call on the part of the captain to protect the engineer by leaving him in in the engine rather than exposing him to traffic needlessly getting off. Lastly, from an operational standpoint, as you may have seen through our social media posts and and other outlets, this area was subject to a red flag event with possibility of dry lightning last weekend. In support of a countywide task force, MOFD upstaffed additional units on Sunday and Monday. And the forecast weather event did not materialize as badly as anticipated to include a lack of dry lightning, and those units were stood down Monday morning. Due to the dry winter and the increasingly erratic weather systems, we do anticipate further red flag events as we approach the fall fire season. Certainly, as I'm sure the directors are aware, fire activity throughout the state is extraordinary right now. And we have had a number of firefighters and And we have had a number of firefighters and, and officers deployed throughout the state to include. Uh, Captains Benzley and Marcourt at the river incident in Mariposa County where they've just returned. Uh, firefighter medic Mike Steer as a fireline paramedic trainee at the Beckworth in Plumas County. Uh, he just returned and then firefighter paramedic Tom Swethelms up on the Dixie Incident, Butte County doing fireline paramedic trainee. And then Dennis Rain is returning from the Dexter Fire Mammoth Lakes, um, tonight. Uh, of note there that of the folks we have or had out, um, two of those are trainees, so we're continuing to develop. Uh, the force as we get folks out on an opportunity to learn from other people's fires, uh, which I think is tremendously beneficial. And Marcia, if you could allow me to share screen, please. Thank you. Uh, here you see several pictures, uh, taken from the painted rock. Uh, burn is our firefighters are getting fire on the ground in that grass. You note the use of topography and weather and opposition to each other as that fire backs down the hill, uh, in the picture on the left. Um, using the wind really to, to work against the topography to slow the advance of the fire. And then in the right, you see there as the fire backs down the hill in the background, the firefighter in the foreground is lighting a fire that will now run up into that catcher's mitt they've created. Uh, it's these abilities, training opportunities in a controlled environment. Where the firefighters are, are able to experiment with different techniques to use the fire to their advantage. Uh, very beneficial both for our ability to conduct future, future prescribed fires from a fuel mitigation standpoint. But also tremendously helpful that, uh, particularly on a large, fast moving incident. Um, using fire to fight fire is a tremendously effective tool and one that when done correctly can be done with less manpower than a direct attack. Uh, given the potential for a high intensity, fast moving fire in this area, having our folks highly skilled. And in both setting fire and having lots of experience, seeing what a fire does under different conditions and being able to really analyze it. Is tremendously beneficial to the, the progression, the development of our firefighters. Uh, these are some pictures from the Caldecott Drill. From the top left there, you see Battalion Chief Lucas Lambert briefing, uh, a very large assortment of firefighters from CONFIRE, MOFD, Oakland. As well as Caltrans and offices of the state Fire Marshal, uh, who are participating. Uh, bottom left, you see the new electrical equipment that they have in place to provide backup power. Uh, top right, you see the, the smoke producing device that was planted in the tunnel. That allowed us to exercise various forms of ventilation control, utilizing the fans. And utilizing those in conjunction with fire attack so that air was provided when and where the firefighters in the tunnel wanted it. Uh, and only at the time that they felt it would be advantageous to their firefighting efforts. And the bottom there, you see, bottom right, you see our Fire Marshal and Battalion Chief Lambert in the control room. Uh, helping to, to piggyback the exercise and operating, operating as liaisons between the folks in the tunnel, uh, and the folks in the control room. Really critical that we have people that are comfortable in that space and speak Caltrans language. So that in the event of a large scale, uh, emergency, we have folks who are prepared to respond to that area to act in that liaison role. Uh, here we see some pictures from inside the tunnel, uh, smoke on the ground utilizing the water supply up here in the top right by the fellow in the vest there. Uh, that's the dedicated water supply that's plumbed, um, through the tunnel that former Fire Marshal Kathy Leonard was instrumental in getting installed and ensuring the appropriate pressure reducing device, valve devices were on those outlets. And then another picture of Engine forty three there simulating fire on the wall, getting water on that fire, at which time, um, it was. Ventilation was called for, was kicked on the fans, uh, and began moving that smoke out of the tunnel. Obviously something that needs to be coordinated as introducing fresh air from ventilation standpoint, while helpful from an IDLH standpoint, not helpful from a fire control standpoint. So really working that coordination between direct firefighting efforts and the, uh, the initiation of ventilation efforts. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. That concludes my report.
Um, Mr. Director Danziger, I have a couple of questions. It was actually two items that you didn't cover, but that I've heard about recently, so I'm just going to ask you if there's any update. Um, one at the, um. At the Arinda City Council meeting, they, they brought your name up last night and they said that you'd been working with Caltrans and, and that they had an update. As far as Caltrans doing work along the, uh, highway twenty four corridor. And I did, I just didn't know, you didn't talk about it tonight, so is there anything new?
Um, well, uh, yes and no, sir. So as, uh, as previously discussed, uh, over, after a two plus year saga, I think is the appropriate description for it. Um, Caltrans has recognized the need for enhanced vegetation management work on the state owned lands that, um, that they. Uh, certain, I believe are correct or categorically exempt from local oversight, meaning that the land that the state owns along the side of the twenty four and, and the onramps, um, is not subject to our fire code, is not subject. To our inspection or authority to issue abatement. Um, Caltrans has, um, is in agreement with MOFD and other local fire agencies. That, uh, that they have an obligation to maintain that and that they play a part in our regional fire risk reduction efforts. Uh, as part of that, they've established a new fund. Uh, it's a thirty million dollar fund, uh, which is a pilot on a statewide basis. And the first projects to be funded, uh, out of this new source are highway twenty three, twenty four, highway thirteen. And highway eighty four in Livermore. Um, some work has been done, however, they're still in the process of letting contracts. And we anticipate seeing a significant increase in fuel reduction work in, uh, the state roadside, state owned roadside on those, um, three areas of note. Uh, Caltrans is using, uh, MOFD's methodology with regard to lives dynamic that was included in our CWPP. That same methodology is being used to identify, um, high risk, high return, uh, areas that would benefit from the enhanced fuel reduction work. And really moving not only to their requirement of ten feet, uh, which has rarely been met in the past. Uh, but looking enhanced work beyond that, that, that requires additional EIR. Uh, things in which I would have to defer to Caltrans as it becomes very complex very quickly. Once you move along. That the ten foot ribbon that is anticipated by the nineteen ninety two EIR.
That, that's great news and it'd be great to see.
Good job to get that done.
Yeah. And, and one other one I just wanted to ask you about also that I, I just read today. Um, had to do with, um. East Bay Regional Parks being awarded, I saw a number of thirteen million dollars, uh, to remove dead and dying trees from Tilden Park into Arinda. And is there any, any additional information on that one?
I believe it's, uh, thirteen point five, three point five million is for firefighting apparatus, ten million for fuel reduction. I, I would have to defer to East Bay Parks with regard to their plants.
Okay, because I specifically mentioned in, in what I read, Arinda.
So, I, as I said, I'd have to defer to East Bay Parks. I'm, I'm not aware of any East Bay Parks lands in the city of Arinda, uh, but I would defer to them.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure what, I'm sure once you find out, I'm, I'm sure you'll let everybody know. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. So that was the end of our chief updates, it sounds like. How about communications received?
Uh, besides the ones that were posted and previously shared, I, I'm not aware of any additional communications received.
Okay, do we have any future agenda items then? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. We were supposed to have public comment on items ten point one through ten point five, sorry. Hearing none, we'll close the comment on that now. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Sorry.
We adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Marcia. Marcia.
I apologize, I was muted. Director Danziger.
Hi.
Director Donner.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
President Jorgens.
Hi. Thanks so much, everybody. See you in a month.
Thank you, everyone. Efficient meeting.
And, and all your staff doing all a good work.
Yeah.
Good night.